Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call the City Council meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete? Wilson?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Gardner? Patton?
Smith?
Here.
For the record, Alderman Navarrete and Alderman Gardner have excused absence tonight. We are expecting Alderman Patton for the meeting. Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, my nation under God and in its world with liberty and justice for all.
So, everyone, tonight is my first meeting after my accident, and I just want to thank the residents, the City Council, who sent not only well wishes but cards. For the record, Alderman Patton is in the meeting at 6:04 PM. But I want to thank everyone that sent cards and prayers for the accident. Long-term, I have to have emergency surgery coming up, and the goal is recovery for torn rotator and torn tendons. But I want to thank my wife, Suprema, and thank my family for not only driving me crazy these last months that I've been healing, but also thank the staff for the well wishes as well. We want to encourage people to slow down. We've had too many accidents in our city. Our first responders did a heck of a job, so I want to thank the firefighters and also thank the police, who not only were on scene, the residents who came out of their houses and prayed in the area, but in particular, our first responders, who not only took care but also take care of many of our residents. So, I appreciate you not only for the care with me and my family, but also for the care of our residents. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to deviate from the regular order of business to address two matters, actually, three matters. One is swearing in of a firefighter. The other one is resolutions for the Chicago firefighters who have lost their lives, and of course, the Fabio young man, Conchero Poncy, for his untimely passing last week. So, is there a motion to deviate from the regular order of business?
Some move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. I would, at this time, invite our fire chief up for presentation, and then also invite the members of... Chief, if you want to do it here, or if you want to do it there?
I'll do the speaking over here, but I'll invite him up. If I could have firefighter Lowry and firefighter Garcia, please come forward. As the mayor was saying, first of all, appreciate those kind words, and this is a special night for the Fire Department. This is something that we've been planning on doing, not only to recognize these two individuals, but also to swear in our new hire, which started March 13th of this year. Get started. These two gentlemen right here, on January 4th of this year, they're on a special team with Mavis 24, which is our Mavis Division, consists of 20 departments, and they're part of the technical rescue team. And on January 4th, 2023, as members of the Mavis 24 Technical Rescue Team, firefighter Lowry and Garcia responded to the Thornstone Quarry for mutual aid requests. The incident involved a recovery mission to retrieve a deceased man located on a ledge nearly 300 feet above the quarry floor. Without hesitation, both firefighter Lowry and Garcia volunteered to be a team to perform this high-risk, low-frequency operation. As Deputy Chief stated, he was extremely proud of these two firefighters for their willingness to step up and perform an extremely risked operation. Though this was a known recovery operation, their action allowed for the family of the deceased to have closure and proper services. Furthermore, their action exemplifies the level of professionalism we want from members of the Calumet City Fire Department. And on a side note, there was 20 members part of this technical rescue team that were in this meeting when they were discussing how they're going to recover this victim. And when they asked for volunteers, a neighboring chief told me that it was complete silence in our house in years, Cal City would do it. And that's what we expect from our personnel. They were great examples that day of what Calumet City Fire Department is all about, professionals and ready to do, as was stated here, the high-risk, low-frequency operation, and they're a prime example of what Calumet City stands for. So, for firefighter Garcia and Lowry, I'd like to give them a round of applause. And including in that is the individual citation award, if I may, in recognition of your outstanding efforts for the recovery of a victim at the Thorn quarry on Wednesday, January 4th, 2023. You are being awarded the individual citation award. On this day, you won above and beyond the call of duty, recovering a victim 300 feet above the quarry. It is the action of firefighter Lowry and Garcia who responded to the call of duty that I commend you both for extraordinary bravery in a dangerous situation on this day, April 13th, 2023. Yeah. Reason why I want to do that early is because both those guys are on duty today. Four o'clock, we just got back from a structural fire, so they showered quick and came over here. So, again, they're heading back to work as we speak. Now, I'd like to invite Isa Ahern forward, please.
If members of the council can join us, we're doing the swearing in of firefighter Isa. Clerk, Mr. Treasure.
Isa joined the force on March 13th of 2023. Twenty-three-year-old came to us with three years of experience with Budzamals. He also is an Army veteran, and he's going to be joining the force, joining the Fire Academy on April 24th of this year for a nine-week Fire Academy. Since the time that he's been with us, he's learned from the guys in the back there, the shift that's working today. Every shift, we have some great firefighters that are on board. We also have some great paramedics, and they teach this young man how to be professional in the job that we do each and every day. And we appreciate the work that those guys do. They put their lives on the line each day for the residents of Calumet City, and we thank them for that. Again, today, nobody even knew we had a structure fire, but that's what they do. They respond on these calls, and you're going to recognize that five-year-old tonight that lost his life. That particular night, five-year-old was shot in the head. Two and a half hours later, they responded to another gunshot victim of a 21-year-old with multiple gunshot wounds. It's safe to say that there is a potential for these guys to see trauma and death in one day than most of you will see in a lifetime. And for that, we applaud the guys that are in the back here and the Calumet City Fire And we also want to recognize our Police Department as well. There's a couple officers here tonight, headed up by Chief Kolash. When the Fire Department responds, the Police Department responds with us, and they do a great job as well, so we support, we appreciate all the support you guys give us. So, thank you, Chief. So, without further ado, again, Isa is joining the force. He's going to be joining Romeoville Fire Academy. He's learning the tricks right now. It's nice when you get somebody that has no fire experience whatsoever, because then we could teach them the Cal City way, and that's what we appreciate. We have a top-of-the-line training center right now. Neighboring towns are coming to us, including the city of Hammond, which comes and joins our training division, so it's special. If you guys get a chance, 24 State Street, that's what that tower is all about. So, without further ado, Mayor, if you want to give the swearing in?
So, Isa, you want to raise your right hand?
Aye.
State your name.
Aye, Isa Ahern.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
The United States of America?
The United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois?
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Calumet City?
The laws and ordinances of the city of Calumet City.
The rules and regulations of Calumet City Fire Department?
The rules and regulations of the Calumet City Fire Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
The office?
The office.
Of probationary firefighter?
Probationary firefighter.
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed.
According to the law and the very best of my ability?
According to the law and the very best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome to Calumet.
On behalf of the City Council, every firefighter with a sworn interest will have the chief given notice of the firefighters, the police officers who are sworn in in my administration with the Calumet City Council. We present it, every one of them will get a copy of their picture for their family members and their booklet of their swearing-in ceremony to commemorate them being a part of Calumet City. So, you won't be a listener, but you'll make sure you give it to the next one. But this is on behalf of the City Council for every firefighter, but we want to thank you for knowing Calumet City, but we look forward to a great career for you in Calumet City. All right?
All right. One, two. One more time. One, two. One more. Yeah.
We are still in deviation. Is there a motion to approve and have read Resolutions 3, 4, and 5?
Some move.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman? Second by Alderman Smith? All in favor?
If there is anyone in the audience, if I mispronounce the name, please feel free to correct me on the enunciation of the names if I do not do so correctly. Resolution 3 is a resolution honoring the life of Chicago firefighter Lieutenant Jan A resolution honoring the life of Chicago firefighter Lieutenant Jan Torek, whereas Lieutenant Torek was a 26-year-old veteran of the Chicago Fire Department, and whereas Lieutenant Torek responded to a fire in a Chicago high-rise. And Lieutenant Torek had a heart for service. He was a veteran of the United States Navy. Lieutenant Torek brought joy to everyone he knew. He is survived by his wife, Natelia Cafcun, his children, Jacqueline, Nicole, Dylann, Olivia, Grace, and Olina, siblings Stefania Stefan Roski, Maria Yaska, Iwa Torek, Don Burrell, and Taurus Chris. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the City Council of Calumet City, Illinois, I express their sincere condolences to the family of Lieutenant Torek. Resolution number four is a resolution honoring the life of Chicago firefighter Jermaine Pelt, whereas Chicago firefighter Jermaine Pelt was a pillar of the West Poo Man community, and whereas he was a registered nurse and an 18-year veteran of the Chicago Fire Department. And whereas firefighter Pelt died while serving his community, and whereas he was greatly loved by his family and community and will be missed by all that knew him. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the City Council of Calumet City, Illinois, express their sincere condolences to the family of Jermaine Pelt. And Resolution 5 is a resolution expressing the city of Calumet City condolences in regard to the passing of five-year-old Contral Ponce. A resolution expressing the city of Calumet City condolences in regard to the passing of five-year-old Contral Ponce, whereas five-year-old Contral Ponce died unexpectedly in the 200 block of Paxton in Calumet City on April 6th, 2023, and whereas he was the joy of his mother's life. And whereas the city of Calumet City mourns with the Ponce family in this tragic loss. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the City Council of Calumet City, Illinois, express their deepest and sincere condolences to the family of Contral Ponce.
Would everyone please rise as we give a moment of silence to the two firefighters Thank you, everyone. The last item under deviation is, I'd like to present, introduce Ashlar Construction, Zoli Carradine, to introduce his business, and he's working on several projects in Calumet City. Zoli, if you guys want to step to the podium. We got a...
Couple of questions.
Okay, you can pass it out.
Yes, sir.
We received a charge from, or I received a charge from Alderman Navarrete in the City Council to not only diversify and follow the minority hiring ordinance that we have in Calumet City, but we want to make sure that we have companies who are not only in Calumet City, but also have, are going to meet diversity goals to make sure that they are part of what we're bringing to Calumet City for construction, housing, and also as we move forward with the new vision for Calumet City. So, if you guys can do brief presentation, go to the mic. Introduce your company. If you can stand behind the podium, introduce yourself, your company.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate you allowing us to be here to tell you who we are, Ashlar Construction. We are, I don't know which way to turn here, this is better here, if you don't mind. My name is Zoli Carradine. I'm the president of Ashlar Construction. We are located here in Calumet City for the last six years, and we employ approximately 75 people here doing work throughout the state of Illinois. And we're so pleased to be located in Calumet City. We moved from Chicago to this very peaceful place of Calumet City, and we are in the industrial district over off of Valencia Court. And again, as I said, we employ about 75 people doing work throughout the municipalities in the city of Chicago, everything from medical build-outs to brand-new home development. And actually, we're in the process of doing quite a bit of C dot work, City of Chicago, transportation work, and Cook County work. And we are involved with building a 10-story building presently in this city of Chicago that will be the first building of its kind to house, have housing for the, for the blind, for the visually impaired, I'm sorry. And it is the first one in this United States, and we're so pleased to be involved with that. And we're pleased to be working here in Calumet City, creating the cafe at the library right now, and just pleased to be here and hope you guys accept us, and anything you got, any questions you guys have, we can ask those questions. Again, Ashlar Construction, we have pamphlets here, we have additional ones that can be sent out as well, but thank you very much.
Is there a motion to return? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and I was just going to introduce myself as well. We are C and G Construction Supply, who's related to Ashlar, so they're doing all of the work, they're building everything, and they're actually getting all their supplies from us. So, we're here in Calumet City, too. We're happy to be here. We just recently moved, 2018, from South Highland. So, again, same thing with Ashlar, we're excited to be here and work with Calumet City.
Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 6:24 PM?
Some move.
All in favor? We have some serious executive session matters, so if there's a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters between the public body, its employees, its representatives, and discuss the sale, the purchase of securities, investments, or investment contracts. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. We will be, we're in executive session at 6:25 PM. The public, you guys are more than welcome to stay around. We have executive session business to discuss. We will come back and take action on the agenda. So, we'll have our cameraman put on some light music. We don't have any refreshments, but we will go and conduct business. So, we're in executive session now. Hey, everyone, apologize for the lengthy executive session. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 7:40 PM? Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. For the record, Alderman Wilson left the City Council meeting at 6:23 PM and refused to come in the executive session. She's no longer a part of this meeting and will not be on the record for the duration of the meeting. We have a lot of agenda to go through. We're at item four on the agenda, which is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any item on the agenda?
Do we have any on the agenda, Mayor?
You can step to the mic and you can...
I was going to say you're the best Alderman in the world, but I'm going to take that back. I'm going to go with Tillman tonight.
Oh.
Yeah, I just can't.
You're going to be like that?
No, I ain't going, mm. I'm loyal to my Alderman. Sherri Lucas Tate, 4th Ward, best Alderman in the world, Alderman Wilson. And I just have, huh? Oh, no, I'm sorry, Williams. I'm sorry. You always mess.
Oh, man, that's, you know...
Tillman do that to me. I'm sorry, I want to retract that. Take that off the camera. Take it, please, retract that. Retract that, because I don't know the other person I just mentioned, but Alderman Williams, you're the best Alderman in the world. I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you very much.
Okay. With all due respect to the mayor, City Council, I just had a few concerns. I've been in this community over 40 years. I remember the mayor when he was first elected as the first African-American mayor Alderman in this city. I appreciate that. But we have a lot of unfinished business, and one of my concerns is this. I'm going to say the good thing first. Is there any way possible that we can update the animal control ordinance for the city of Calumet City? These people with animals, I have one, but my animal is a house animal. And it is very disrespectful for me to live on a corner, and I take great care of my property, and to come out and can't come out my gate because there is poop at my gate. That's very rude and very disrespectful. I did talk to animal control, they all on it, they on top of it, but I think the Animal Chapter 10 city ordinance needs to be updated. So, if anyone can tell me when was the last time it was updated, I would greatly appreciate that. Anyone knows?
We did get your email, and Alderman Tillman is over ordinance and resolution. If you send it to me, Alderman Tillman can have a private conversation with you afterwards.
Okay.
But we did, or I did order animal control to look into it. We are going to order signs. I believe you talked to John as well about the signs, but Alderman Tillman will direct it to answer about the ordinance update.
Okay. The other question, concern I have, like I said, I've been a resident out here almost 40 years, and I don't know what it's going to take for us to come together, because in all of this bickering back and forth, the residents of Calumet City are suffering behind it. So, I'm pleading to you guys at this point, I hope we can come together, agree to disagree, but come together as one, because I'm getting so, I'm not even an Alderman, I'm just a resident, and the residents are very upset the way things are going. And I'm going to give a couple of examples. They blew my phone up, they almost tore my door down with all the publicity, the advertisement and all of that. Now, the election is over, I had to go on the website with all that call, and they could have came called and said, "Look, this is a winner, so congratulations can be in order." It's just, this was the worst election I've ever seen, being a resident of Calumet City. So, I'm pleading to you guys, I will continue to pray for this city, that I hope we can all get together and come together, because in the interim, the residents are suffering. We, we are, and is, are there any residents in here that you believe that we're suffering from all of this? Okay, don't just put your hand up a little bit, just let me hear from you.
Ms. Lucas, I'll please direct your comments, because you have like one more minute left, because we have to...
Okay, well, I don't need that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. We do hear you, and we will work together.
And we have signs out there, and they're still not doing any good. So, you said Alderman Tillman is over the animal control?
He's not over animal control. You asked for update on the ordinance.
Ordinance, right.
So, Alderman Tillman is over ordinance and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Tasha Holloway from the 2nd Ward, and I would just like to piggyback off what the young lady said. It's beginning to be too much with all the back and forth and with the cattiness, with the emails, with the text messages and robocalls. I have epilepsy. I have to be in the bed by a certain time, and it makes no sense for me to be awakened from my sleep that I need at 9:30, 10 o'clock. Another concern that I have is that my children were in a program at the library, which they are no longer in. I instructed them to walk home. They were brought home by a stranger to me and my girls, who never introduced himself to me or my children, and he brought them home, and he, I work for Jackson Hewitt, he went so much as to harass me in my place of work while I was with the client. me in my place of work while I was with the client, asking me to give my minor son's number to him, who was on his, my minor son was on his way to pick up his children, to pick up my children already. So, he kept pressing, he called me like four times at work, causing me to get a write-up. Okay? And I do agree that it's time for all of this to stop. I don't believe that there is a reason for political literature to be going into my, I can only speak for 649 Saginaw's address, political literature being put in the mail with no postage on there. And you know, I just feel harassed by all the chaos. Now, the election is over with, I just wanna have peace, and I just wanna come home from work and take my medication like I'm supposed to, tend to my children, and go to bed. And, thank you, Second Ward, for everything that you do, and the rest of the Aldermen that are on staff tonight. Thank you to City Clerk Fix for everything that you have done. And thanks to everyone, and that's my little rant.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to, I'm very happy that you survived that horrible accident.
Thank you.
And I'm just, I was at the, it was a meeting when you first got in at TF North, and I had a concern with, we're ever gonna have crossing guards back? Because I live across the street from one of the elementary schools, and I witnessed a lot of running the stop sign, kids that walk, you know, to school. When they get to that corner, it was, it was great when we hit a crossing guard, 'cause some of the parents are in a hurry, and they just run the stop sign, 'cause they wanna get their kid to school on time. And then the same thing with when the kids are coming home, same issue. So, I had brought it to the attention of the Chief of Police, and he mentioned that he would have to discuss it with you all. So, I'm just throwing it out there, if, you know, we can find out if that's gonna be a possibility.
We are working on that. Alderman Patton actually has that item.
Okay.
Working with the school districts, and we will bring that back to the council to finish it up. We have to work out an agreement with the school districts, and that's what, city council has discussed that.
Mm-hmm.
So, we will bring that forward soon.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, let me just say to residents, I don't want the perception to be out there that, you know, the city council has not done anything for our city. We brought almost a hundred million dollars in grants to Calumet City, far more than any other community. You know, residents asked for streets to be paved, we paved Pulaski, we got eight million dollars to pave Pulaski, we got five million dollars to pave Burnham Avenue. We've brought in new businesses to the city. We're changing our business model in our city. So, I encourage and I like the residents who come to the meeting, but please dig deeper than what you see in an election. Elections happen, and we don't control those elections, though the tenor of those elections. We can have discussions, but at the same time, please realize and dig deep in what Calumet, your Calumet City government is doing for our city. When I first got in office, I got challenged by Alderman Tillman and Alderman Williams. It doesn't get real until you start that first construction project. We've gotten almost a hundred million dollars, and we're getting more for our programs, and let's work through the issues together. And I agree, we do have to change the tenor, and we will, but let's look at the positive things that your city is doing for you in this community, to make sure that Calumet City is a world-class entertainment destination, which we will be. And I will just say that I, you know, I, the faces that I see tonight, I would encourage you guys to bring more people back to the city council, or watch it on our, on our city channel, so you understand what's going on in the city. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We'd like to table the minutes until the next city council meeting, so is there a motion to table the minutes that appear on the agenda?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, a report sustaining committees. Public safety, Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking to call a public safety meeting, hopefully next week, Thursday. Maybe we can do a joining, adjoining meeting with all the other committees. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinance and resolutions, I'm sorry, public utilities, Alderman Patton.
Nothing from the public utilities committee tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance and resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
No report for ordinance resolutions. I do have a report for public works on behalf of Alderman Everette, the chairman. I'm just a committeeman on the public works committee. The public work committee will be calling a meeting April twentieth at 6:00 P.M. in council chambers. This will be a committee of the whole meeting. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
April twentieth, next Thursday.
Permits and licensing, Alderman Smith. Thank you, Alderman. City council reports, let's start with Alderman Tillman, city, I mean Alderman Smith, I'm sorry. City council reports.
Yes, just wanna encourage suburban residents, continue to report any issues with any properties. Also, I wanna welcome BA's banquet hall to the Seventh Ward and to the city of Calumet City. There was a great grand opening, we had a great turnout on the thirtieth of last month. Just wanna encourage residents, if they have any banquet needs or special event needs, to consider having their event there. It's a great space. And I will be reaching out to their management to try to hold, start hosting ward meetings there at a later date. That'll be published at a later date. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman. Sixth Ward, Alderman Patton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, I'd like to encourage residents to continue calling my office or emailing my office with any issues. It's unbelievable the number of residents that I talk to on a weekly basis that tell me they've been, you know, trying to get issues resolved for, you know, months or years in some instances, and it's the first that I'm hearing of it. And, you know, within, you know, a day or two of, you know, bringing it to me, we get them directed to the right city department, and our, our great department heads get them taken care of. So, if you're having any issues whatsoever, whether it's with, you know, anything with the city, or any of our outside vendors that you have to deal with, you know, feel free to call my office, 708-891-8196, or email me at JPattan@calumetcity.org. If I can't help you directly, I will make sure that we get you in touch with whoever at the city can take care of it for you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth Ward, Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First come, now to God, who makes all things possible. The meeting, the May meeting, Third and Fourth Ward meeting will be May first, Monday, May first, at 6:30. We're still deciding where we're gonna have that meeting, whether it's gonna be in the Third or the Fourth Ward, but either way, you'll be notified. June team celebration is June seventeenth. Still up in the air about where that's going to be, but it is going forward. Those things should be solidified this week or early next week. Just to kinda piggyback off what the mayor said, we are moving the city forward. Unfortunately, there are some black eyes that we take, both criminally, from people committing crimes in our community, and also from some malintention that happens from members of the council, unfortunately. But, I always said I'm the longest sitting Alderman here in Calumet City, but I believe that everybody that sits up here, heart's in the right place. But sometimes we lose focus. Everybody, you know, sometimes get emotional, you know, about this. I won't say it's an argument all the time, but I think it's passion, you know, for, to do the right thing here in Calumet City. We're all, we all think progressively, at least I would like to believe so, but I know I do. And I don't think anybody will be sitting, would be sitting here if they didn't also think progressively for our citizens. And again, like the mayor said, I think everybody should take a deep breath and look into the undertone of some of these things that you, the text messages, the emails. I think you should look at those things for what they really are, and look at the source of where they come from sometimes, and see that, you know, excuse my French, it's BS. It's BS. It is. We shouldn't, we shouldn't get wrapped up into negativity, where we're all supposed to be working towards improving the, the development here, and the candor, and making things safe for our children, and making this a better place to live in. That's what we should be working towards, that's everybody. We don't throw shots across the council floor. I think the way that our meetings are, are ran, and the tone that we have with each other most of the times, we are the ones that everybody watch, because it's always peaceful. It's the truth. Sometimes our meetings last twenty minutes, because the unified front that we have out here before the public is the way it's supposed to be. We have our disagreements outside of the eyes of the public, because those things need to be worked out between us as legislators that sit on this council. That's what those things supposed to happen. Not when we come before you all, it's about moving the city forward. That's what it should always be about. And I'm not throwing no, no shots at nobody, but some of us take shots, and we say nothing. We say nothing. I take shots. I took shots all day on Election Day. I did not respond, not one time. I don't respond to bogus text messages about myself. My family's character was assassinated on Election Day. And I'm highly upset about that, but I'm gonna take the shot, and I'm gonna move forward. Our public safety department was accused of one of the most disrespectful allegations that I've ever heard, the fire department. Who hates a fireman? They're the ones, when you call 911, when you need help, who coming? You need that help. We all do, sometimes. Hopefully, I don't need it no time soon, but, you know, I commend our public, our public safety, police, and fire, 'cause I know what you all go through. And we need to pray for them, especially after this weekend with this kid that killed himself. They had to go see that. They got families, too. They got families. You don't, yeah, they tough, but I can only imagine what that scene was like when they got there. So, we need to lift them up in prayer, too. We need them as strong as they can be. And I'm gonna be quiet, 'cause I, I see, you know, I don't really talk much, but I talk when something needs to be said, especially when I'm passionate about whatever it may be, then I think it's, it's, it's time to share my emotion. And I'm always keeping positive, most of the time, and I'm definitely gonna do that in front of the camera, at least within reason. But, I'm glad you all came out. I'm glad the residents that got this robocall, this, this last one, I'm glad that you all came out. But, again, look at the undertone of what some of these calls are, and consider the source. Make sure it's factual. When you wanna stand up for something, stand up for what's right and what's what makes sense, or, excuse me, what makes sense, and the facts, the facts, as they are presented. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman, Third Ward report.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know if Alderman Williams took all your time.
I, I... Well, it's only four of us today, so I think I got some more time.
First of all, I wanna thank all the residents that attended the Real Estate and Estate Planning Conference as part of the Third Ward's continued effort to encourage homeownership in Calumet City. This particular series was, it's a four-part series, that was the first part of it. Part two will be announced at a later date. Also, as Alderman Williams said, the Third Ward Town Hall Meeting is May first, but it's either gonna be at Sand Ridge or Downey Park, we're just trying to hammer out those details. I'll make sure I get that information to my residents, and I have nothing else.
Thank you, Alderman. Item eight are informational items. So, just for the public, we have Track and Trap, which is a outside vendor of the city that the city pays for. If residents have issues with the skunks, squirrels, moles, this is a service that the city started, that's free to residents, that you can go on the city website and request them to come out and trap those wildlife animals for free, in addition to what our animal control does. The moles that get reported, that has to be approved with the city, but this is an added service. So, informational items, eight A is Track and Trap. Is there a motion to accept and, accept the item and place it on file, eight A?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Smith. At the next meeting, we'll let you guys know, I always like giving the numbers of how many animals they trap and the benefit to the city, because residents are using this service, and I wanna thank the residents who call animal control for that. Item nine are new business items, A one through nine. Are there any questions about new business items, A nine, A one through nine?
Can you just say something about number three, Mayor? I know there was a question...
Yes.
...earlier today from one of my colleagues. "I'm not crazy, and this is not a typo. The motion as presented is correct. If you take a ride through the Sixth Ward, Forest Place runs on a loop around Forest Avenue, and I'm asking for speed bumps to be placed around that entire loop." So, it goes from Forest Place, where it comes into Forest Avenue, to Forest Place, where it comes into Forest Avenue down here. Thank you.
Public Works, you guys get that?
Is that gonna take up all of the speed bumps?
All right, is...
We only had two.
All right, is there a motion to approve item nine, A one through nine?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes, item passes. Item B are building permits. There's one item under building permits, seven thirty-seven, thirty-five, Torrance. Alderman Smith, do you have a motion for this?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Smith to approve item, uh, business sign, second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Item C are resolutions and ordinances. We'd like to table resolution item one on the agenda, or Alderman Tillman, you wanna refer to your committee or table?
I'd like to refer item C one to the ordinance resolutions committee.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Smith to refer item one, C one, to the resolution ordinance committee. Do we need all in favor, or roll call, Madam Clerk? All in favor?
Aye.
And we did item... Is there a motion just to approve items resolutions two through six?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Alderman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Patton? Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right, unfinished business, Alderman Smith? Is there a motion to approve items, uh, D, financial matters, D1 through...
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman.
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Smith?
Yes. Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, unfinished business, um, Alderman Smith?
Uh, yes. Just wanna, uh, remind the 7th Ward residents, um, due to a, uh, schedule conflict, uh, we will not be having, uh, the monthly town hall meeting, uh, for this month of April. We will have one in May, please look out for information on that, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton, unfinished business?
Thank you, mayor. Um, just to piggyback briefly off of what Alderman Williams said during his council report, there's been a lot of disagreements on this council over the years. You know, I, I don't think there's a person up here that I haven't disagreed with over the years, and, and I think we're all still friends and can walk away knowing that we disagreed and, you know, agree to disagree, but I, you know, what really struck me from Alderman Williams's comments is, I wanna make sure that I take the time here publicly to, to give my support to our public safety departments, our police department, our fire department. Um, you know, I've had numerous instances where I've had to call both to my house, and, and there's never been anything more than the utmost professionalism and, um, you know, first-class treatment by our police department and our fire department, anytime I've ever needed either of them. So I just, you know, I wanted to take this opportunity as well, like Alderman Williams did, to, you know, just share my thoughts and my support to both our public safety departments. That's it, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams, unfinished? Thank you, Alderman Tillman?
Nothing, ma'am, thank you.
Last, uh, item, I got a call recently that, uh, Representative Will Davis was involved in a horrific car accident. Uh, I would just ask for, uh, prayers for Representative Will Davis. Um, he is, uh, currently in a coma, at, um, so we wanna, if you can pray extended prayer tonight for Representative Will Davis and his family, um, and we'll have more news, uh, as it develops. We wanted to pray for his family, his daughter Jenna, of course, uh, his wife, uh, and just extend our prayers from Calumet City to him. There being no further business to come before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn at 8:08 PM?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Williams. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.